I think we're ready to begin this morning, so appreciate you all being here. We have a new person at the table today, Carol. I guess everybody is familiar with you now, so welcome. Commissioners, before we ask the manager about his presentation, anybody got anything they need to say right now? Okay, Mr. Manager.
All right, Commissioners, today we want to talk about, we're going to let Lorian, with support from Lindsay, talk about the budget retreat topics. We have met yesterday and last week and went through some different topics that I think would be of interest to the Commissioners, but we'll go over those and then let you give us, if there's some consensus on some other things, we'd be happy to add it to the agenda for the budget retreat. So after that, then I'm going to let Kate talk a little bit about the NCAA and some of the things leading up to the tournaments. So if you would, Lorian, it's all yours.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lorian Shawalter-Arri, your Budget Director. This list is the ones that Mary's talking about that we came up with of tentative ideas. Some of them are ones you've seen before, the more routine ones, and then there are a couple that we wanted to talk to you about for your thoughts and then, of course, what you would like to see. So the first would be Jeremy Hill doing a condition of the local economy, and then, of course, the county financial forecast. And then for the newer topics, there's state and local options for economic development, state funding threats, the community development process, the RFI for CAD and records management systems, a health insurance primer, and the audit status follow-up. So any thoughts that you have on those, if there's ones that you'd like to see, and then anything else that we're missing that you want to talk about?
The one thing on the, I brought up the economic development, the state ECO DVO, because we have the potential of getting someone down here from the state to talk through what they do now, to talk through the different programs that they use in support now and provide a little dialogue on that. Not, you know, not that we want to do anything with it, but it really is more as information because I think a lot of the staff and maybe some of the Commissioners probably would like to know more about that. I know I certainly would, just so to get somebody down here from state or even Jason Watkins to be a part of that discussion would be insightful, I believe, for the retreat. The other topics are really just things that over this last year, one or more of the Commissioners have talked about as an interest to them, and we've kind of coalesced that into a document for the agenda. If there's something on there you don't like or something in there you want to add, just let us know and we'd be happy to do it.
Can you read that list again?
Yes. Jeremy Hill presenting on the condition of the local economy, the county financial-
Can we stop there, can just slow down just a little bit?
Maybe go one at a time and let's discuss as we go about that.
So on the Jeremy Hill, Jeremy Hill, honestly, I haven't been in one of his discussions yet where it really wasn't doom and gloom, but it's always something that is very interesting and always leads to, we always allocate him a little bit of time and he always requires more time because there's so many questions that is asked of him. I think this year we've allocated, what, about an hour for him?
Hour and a half.
Hour and a half. So I think last year was an hour. Somehow, we added a little more time to it this year, just to give you guys a little more time to ask some questions and kind of dig into it a little bit more than we have in the past.
You know, I find just, like, the last one we had was interesting, but I don't know if it was helpful or that we used it at all to, in our budget process. Personally, I don't think it affected at all, so I'm okay with, I mean, we can have it, but an hour and a half to listen and ask questions, but...
Well, if we set aside that much time and don't take it, I mean, we are, there's no set time, we can move right into the next item.
Correct.
I've always appreciated his presentation, kind of get my mind around the big picture before we start talking about the micro stuff, but I understand your comment, so.
All right, what's the next one?
The county financial forecast.
Yep, next.
The state and local options for economic development.
And can you talk a little bit, Lindsay, about who from state, Brenton, or is Brenton here?
Brent had a question. We would talk with the regional representative from the Department of Commerce, who would be able to come in and tell us about what state options there are and then how that integrates into what our local policies can be. And so he has about a half an hour presentation that he can give along with some kinds of questions. And if we actually got to someone like Jason Watkins or someone like Guy, who has the local flavor and knows kind of what the city and county are moving toward with Spirit and what we could have done with Tyson, that might be useful to understand where we're going, what we want to do, is we come up with a strategic plan that Commissioner Dennis has.
Okay. Come in. Okay.
Okay, state funding threats.
If I could on this one, we have had a table in past years where we have shown all of the mandated programs the state requires us to do. We show how much state support we receive for each of those programs, along with other income that comes into that program, to give Commissioners a feel for the level of county support that goes toward them. And so add as to with school funding that we know will be a threat this year, certainly local aid is not a threat, and so this would give us some context to know what could be at risk.
And when you give us that info, will you kind of give us some easily quick analysis of how that funding's, a lot of times it's gone down in the last few years, so we'll kind of see what that, see what the trend is? Okay.
Okay, community development process.
What does that mean?
That is related to, you know, last year we just kind of, during the year, developed a new method of analyzing the community development funding initiatives. So I just thought it would be insightful for 15, 20 minutes, kind of go over that process again, and there may be some things that we did last year that we need to include in the budget process this year as a re-recurring initiative. And so we probably would need to give some of the department heads a heads-up during their process that that needs to continue on, or whatever that is. So I thought for an amount of time, we probably would need to discuss that before the budget process started.
Okay, the RFI for CAD and the records management systems.
It's an expense that for the next few years, we need to tackle how we're going to pay it, how we're going to wrap our heads around it. I know we don't want to use any capital improvement funding or bonding for that, so we need to just have a discussion about it, what it is, what's needed infrastructure-wise, how we're going to build that fund to be able to pay for that, and I think it would be a good discussion.
Okay, a health insurance primer?
This has been kind of reoccurring. I know the last couple of years, we've heard this kind of over and over again, but in 2019, with a new contract coming for 2020, we need to go ahead and see what our options are for our health insurance, and it'd be a good time to have a discussion about that. I already know we're going to do some workshops on this, you know, just to kind of see what's out there, what options are out there. Is it telehealth, is it HSA, is it, what is that? But we need to go ahead and have some workshops now because 2019 is the budget year prior to the 2020 change, so. Is that fair?
Yep.
All right.
Great, and an audit status follow-up.
The Commissioners will just be, you know, the 22-plus recommendations we received through EKBD's financial audit, and so hopefully Brent have updated due audit status, because this would be now that a full year has completed, where we are with our recommendations, what's been implemented, what we're still having to do, especially as the 2017 audit is going to be wrapped up in February, March.
Okay.
That's all we have on our list.
The one I had that is not on the list, but Commissioner Dennis, you had talked to me on Friday about your contact and workforce alliance. We could add this to the discussion of ECO DVO as a, you know, sub-delegate to that discussion. I don't know, I just thought it would be a chance for you to have an agenda topic related to that, might be a good place for it.
Good, bring the other Commissioners up to speed. I've been concerned, we've got 1,000 physicians that need filled with Spirit. We do have a big investment in WATC and WSU. We need to make sure that we're all working in the same direction, that the whole community is working in the same direction for workforce development. The State of Kansas has recently created a position with Dr. Diana Backer, who used to be the Commissioner of Education for the State of Kansas, for workforce development. She was recently appointed, actually, by Lieutenant Governor Collier, as I understand. She'll be in town along with Collier tomorrow, by the way. But I think we need a high-level group here in Sedgwick County to take a look at what we need to do for workforce development, in which direction we need to go to make sure that we have the workforce we need to be able to fill all these jobs, because that thousand jobs is going to spin off thousands of other jobs within Sedgwick County, and where are we going to find all these people that are qualified? So I think we need some kind of a high-level conference to get together, to talk with all the key players and figure out which direction we need to go and what part that Sedgwick County needs to play in.
Now, we can have that as an agenda item for the retreat or just plan for a workshop later on in the next couple of months to be able to kind of talk through that.
Well, I agree that it's something that we need to be not only aware of, but somehow be working with the people developing the strategy. The, I know that Keith Lawing and whoever's working with some of his groups are really focused on that, trying to come up with a solution, and we need to have one that gets us where we want us to be without just having to write a big check, which is what a lot of solutions involve, so.
I agree.
How long did we allocate for ECO DVO?
An hour.
We could have a short 10-minute part of that, where we could have, we could discuss kind of what GWP is doing with workforce development, workforce development. They've got quite a bit of analysis going on, quite a bit of initiatives, so we could get you briefed on that.
When are we going to, what's the date of the retreat?
February 15.
Which day?
February 15.
February 15.
Now, ultimately, that will have to be a part. I know we're working with GWP to try to get a strategic planner in here to develop a regional economic development plan, that will ultimately be an action plan as part of that strategic plan, but we definitely need to start the ingredients, get the right people together to start that dialogue, because Spirit needs workers now. And actually, I've, over the last couple of weeks, have seen some aggressive marketing on TV by Spirit in reference to getting workers in here, so they have ramped up to meet that demand.
Well, we may want to look at something on that workforce development before February 15th, so I don't know if we need to work with the controllers replacement there a little bit and see what we can get going.
Are we meeting over in the HR training room again, is that the plan?
No, I don't particularly want to meet back over there. I'd like to find some other location. We haven't really finalized that yet.
LETC?
What's that?
LETC?
We could do LETC? That would be a good one.
Sheriff says it's okay.
We can certainly work on that best that we desire, Richard.
We have a planning meeting on Wednesday, and we're going to have to figure out the logistics, so that'll surround the top ones.
It's right next to a Starbucks, I'm in.
Okay, could I ask you if there's any other question?
Yeah, I'd like, at some point, to talk about an equipment reserve fund or whatever, Lindsay, whatever you would call it. It kind of goes along with that information management system and some other stuff. A way to handle this, I've talked about this in the past, I think we could incorporate something into our budgeting process that would help us alleviate issues of things coming up all of a sudden, but we could have a discussion if we want to do that.
And I could think about that since we last talked, those suggestions I might have is for, we need to review, set together a decision package, which is the request for additional funding that we typically go through the budget. That would be a way to put into budget deliberations and bring it up as a true consideration. So I'm not sure for three, we have enough information to talk about then, but that could be something, we get it on the feedback.
Well, I'd love that.
Okay.
May I ask, when do you think you'll have a plan for the workshops in terms of, can we expect to have some kind of a plan developed on when we're going to have the workshops and what the topics will be? Can we expect that sometime in the next month or so to kind of develop what's going to happen in terms of workshops?
We can put something loose together, but we may flesh that out in the retreat once we start talking to them, what the interest of the Commissioners truly are in regards to that.
I just want to miss an opportunity.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Commissioners?
Yeah, that may be something we may need to do, multiple workshops, just based off of the interest and the topics. I mean, it may take a long time to talk through HSA or telehealth or whatever that topic is, and we may not be able to do it in one workshop. It may be subsequent workshops.
Well, these workshops, we can make plans, arrangements, set time aside for those any time as needed, make them as many workshops as we need on the topic, so.
Yes.
Okay.
We can really quickly find some time on our calendars that's available and get through my calendar, and then just plot in if we need and can't do it.
Yeah, well, going to have a workshop, we've got to make time for it. I mean, you know, if it's an issue we want to understand and move the ball, we just, we've got to make time for something.
So, on this health stuff, right, we need to find out, you know, have a workshop, find out what the options are, what we don't know, what we do know, and I'd like to see us take action and not, we've been talking about this, but now with the individual mandate being gone and everything, I think we may have some options that we didn't have before, and I'd like to see us institute something for next year, if, that means we can't volley gag too much if that's what we want to do, but.
Well, I see actually the workshops as an opportunity to bring some outside folks in and give us some kind of understanding of what's out there, you know, the different options, and then we may be able, based off of that, to start firming up the direction we want to go. For an RFP, because really we're talking about, in the end, what do we want to see?
We are, we have an RFP then, or not an RFP, but a request for information. We're going to be working with the Actuarial to look at some of the plans that we are working on developing, and we have like three different selection options that we've been working on for a while. And what we want to do now is get the Actuarial to then to review all of that, provide some input and guidance to us, and then we will be able to present information to you, any other sources as well that you all would like to learn more about. And then we'll use the Actuarial to help develop an RFP that will work on at the end of this year, that way we will get a new provider, because our contract with United Healthcare runs out in 2019, and we have to have a new provider for 2020. And with that will be whatever options that you all decide that you want to have and provide for our employees, and that will be part of the clean package that will go out for RFP for 2020. But there's been, there's been a lot of work that we have been doing, and I know that with all of the contracts that we had that came up this year that had, that were renewed, and then the new voluntary products, we were waiting to get that information done, so then we could walk the halls and talk to guys, have a meeting, and edit it back. So we have an action plan, and be very happy to share that with you and provide other information to you as well, whatever you all would like to know more about.
Okay. Well, glad we got a plan, and I just need to know a whole lot more about it than I know now, so.
And it is, a health savings account has a lot of parts to it, a lot of considerations.
Okay. All right, any other comments, Commissioners? Lorian, I guess, you have more?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Kate?
Okay, Commissioners, as you know, we have a very, several very important basketball games coming to Wichita that happened to be in the month of March. I will give all the credit to the communications team. We've brainstormed some ideas for how Sedgwick County can participate and show support for the NCAA tournament that will be here the first week or first couple of weeks of March. I'd like to draw your attention down to Sunday, March 11th, that is Selection Sunday, and that's when we will find out which teams will be coming to play at Interest Bank Arena. So what the communications team has come up with some ideas, and these are all very tentative and subject to change as well. We can change all of the electronic displays at our county-owned facilities to say welcome basketball fans. The NCAA has very strict guidelines and rules on what can and cannot be said about the tournament, and we cannot make reference, Lindsay, correct me if I'm wrong, we cannot make reference to NCAA, March Madness, Road to the Final Four. They have just locked it down. So welcome basketball fans is a safe alternative to welcome everyone to Sedgwick County in Wichita for the tournament. Social media will be provided by Visit Wichita. They are drafting the posts and everything we can share about the tournament, and so we'll be happy to share that from our Sedgwick County accounts. They also have designed, Visit Wichita has designed posters and table tents and everything that is available for us to use as well and post in county facilities. The week of March 12th, we could have a Spirit Week here at Sedgwick County for departments who can or may choose to participate, starting with wearing your favorite jersey or team apparel. On Tuesday, we could have chairman or commissioners, county leaders, elected officials, maybe a bracket, fill in the bracket for bragging rights on who can choose the, or who can have the best bracket for the tournament, and maybe divisions and departments might be planning on having something similar as well. On Wednesday, we have thought about dressing up the commission meeting room in a basketball theme, wearing jerseys, referee outfits, what have you, something to show our support for the tournament. That day is also the open practice day at Interest Bank Arena, and anyone can go to the arena and watch the teams practice for free. You don't have to be a ticket holder, so we can encourage staff as they're able to go and maybe have lunch at the arena and watch the teams practice. Thursday is the first day of games, and that's also Fan Fest. We could have or look into having a potential for a basketball free throw game or a basketball goal, portable basketball goal, for staff to take during their breaks to go relieve some energy and shoot hoops. And there's also a potential for Sedgwick County to sponsor Fan Fest, and this can be in an amount anywhere between $500 and $5,000, and that is for the Fan Fest at Interest Bank Arena. And then Friday, the 16th, there are no games. We could either have the free throw basketball hoop or competitions or any other activity that people may come up with, best decorated office or share your sport superstitions, however people choose to enjoy their sporting events. And then Saturday, March 17th, is the final round of games in Wichita, and it's also St. Patrick's Day, so there might be some potential for us to promote those games, and there's also the St. Patrick's Day Parade as well that we could participate in. This is just tentative ideas for what Sedgwick County can do. I've reached out to Visit Wichita to see if they want any sort of proclamation or Commissioners to attend the official events, and I'm waiting to hear back on that. But in the meantime, here is what, here are some ideas that we have come up with in seeking your blessing.
Will other, or, I mean, like, for example, City of Wichita, are they going to do something like this, or is this something we've come up with and we're going to move forward with it?
I've reached out to the city to get their ideas, to see if it's anything as excited as what we have come up with. There's also potential for us to decorate the side of the county building, maybe decorate the windows with a big basketball or what have you, something, not a Jayhawk, or something basketball themed as well, just to make it fun, and maybe a competition between the city and county to decorate, you know, the sides of the buildings that are facing each other, but I'm waiting to hear back from the city on what their plans are.
Okay, and is this, did you mention a budget number to do all this?
I do not have a budget number yet. It depends on if we choose to move forward with renting a portable basketball goal or finding the electronic free throw game. Those would be probably the biggest costs, but we-
A lot of these really don't have a cost.
Right. Those would be the biggest costs, and depending on if we move forward with this, then we'll start establishing those costs.
Okay, and I, did I hear you say that we couldn't use the phrase March Madness?
We cannot.
Why'd you say it?
Right, and the promotional materials in our social media, we cannot use NCAA, March Madness, Road to the Championship, Road to the Final Four, and some other notable comments.
So any of our-
That's why we're saying-
decorations or whatever, we can't use that?
No.
Okay. Well, that's probably a good marketing ploy, huh?
Visit Wichita-
Are they afraid we'll do something they don't like or something and have their name on it?
They have very strict branding guidelines, so the posters that are being developed by Visit Wichita, I believe those will have the NCAA logo and March Madness on them, and those are the official NCAA-approved signs.
Okay, but these activities are for us?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, that ought to build enthusiasm, excitement, whatever. Okay. Commissioners, questions?
If we're going to be in the St. Patty's Day Parade, they've already got the stuff out on signing up for it, and lineup's different, it's now McLean.
Right.
There's a limit on the number of vehicles unless you have more than one entry, and there's a number of changes on it from the past year, so we need to get involved in it if we're going to be in it at the Sedgwick County.
Right, we'll need to figure out if there's interest in participating in that event.
Okay, any questions, come in. Okay, well, it sounds to me like a lot of work, so I'm glad you're doing it.
Yes.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have anything to bring to the table, Richard?
Yeah, the firefighter issue that we were going to do, the salary thing with, what's the status on that? Is something going to come before us?
I don't know if it needs to, what's the status on that?
He was going to work on getting that resolved after the first year.
The seven firefighters who-
I knew in the past it was going to be something, maybe it doesn't have to be on the agenda now, but I just want to follow up.
Back pay for the seven firefighters?
We said we were going to take care of that after the first year, and it is after the first year.
It is the ninth. We'll get that done.
And then the Treasury Office thing, are we, can we get, I hear all sorts of rumors and stuff, I'm trying to get information, can we get a briefing on this about exactly what the plan is and financial, there's just so many questions. to get, it's just complicated and it's, well, there's just issues, and I just keep hearing different rumors and different things and trying to get some facts, and I don't know what's going on, and I don't think the public will agree with us.
Well, we can, we can definitely have someone come to us and tell us what the details are, I mean, that's a good idea, the question is whether or not, I don't know, when's the time to schedule on the VOCC meeting, if that's your request?
Well, I don't know when, but, I mean.
Okay. You want to, okay, there's a question as to whether or not the treasurer might want to come up and do that, or whether she just wants to chat with us.
You know, the county manager staff and the different department heads, and I know Lindsay and have briefed the commissioners individually, so it really is up to, at this point, are you just looking for Linda specifically, or the treasurer's office in general?
Well, in general, I mean, you see, we've been briefed on it, I've gotten information now recently, because I'm asking for information, financial analysis, I hear about kiosks, I don't know where they're going to go in, you know, I have lots of questions about process, we had an RFP, and it was turned down, and now we're doing this, and how it came about, and what, why, and what the plan is, staff analysis, is it going to reduce staff, and what's the thorough put of each of the, how many people are seen per day at the three satellites, and what's it going to, you know, what our main one is, there's just lots of stuff that, and I have people asking me, and I say, "I don't know," they seem to think we're doing it, that's part of the problem, the headline said the county's doing this, well, county's not doing it, and I just don't see a comprehensive plan and analysis, I'm concerned about some of the financial issues of it, but paper says it's going to save $150,000, I don't see that it is, and I'm trying to get some answers.
Well, to answer these questions, would it be better to have the treasurer or one of her staff come up and visit us one-on-one, so that we get it direct from her office, since this is under her direct authority?
Yeah, a lot of those questions are management questions, they would have to come from the treasurer's office, so.
And I'm fine with them coming and talking to us, but at some point, there needs to be a public presentation as well, because the public has questions that I can't answer, and it's not my, it's not our initiative, so to speak, and I have a hard time answering questions on her behalf, and so.
Well, then, perhaps the solution is we have, we wanted to check with the treasurer and ask her how she would like to handle it, and then we'll take our direction from her.
I appreciate that, I just got a letter today, because one of my constituents thought that we were the ones that were doing this and have concerns, so we need to get something out to the public, let them know, if nothing else, who to talk to.
Yeah, I guess the question is, what's the form to do that? Do we have a public meeting on it, or do we want a communication to go out, or what?
Yeah, I think we need to ask treasurer, and say, "How would you like to do this?" And, because I think we're just repeating, commissioners are repeating questions that they've received, so.
Okay, we'll get Belinda.
Okay, anything else, Richard? David?
Nothing.
Yeah, Michael?
No, sir.
Okay, I want to know, or a question I have, how are we going to respond to this fireworks request? Are we going to do anything with that? Well, we got a, we got an email where persons want us to lobby state legislature to change the rules about fireworks so they can, well, their preference is that they shoot fireworks all day long, any day, or at least on, you know, another eight or 10, 10 more days, and let people do it on birthdays, and I mean, I don't know what all they wanted, but, I mean, I guess what I'm going to, I'm assuming all the commissioners got that email from JC Freedom Enterprises or something like that.
But is that a Kansas or Wichita organization, or is it someone nationally that sells these? I didn't even know who it was coming from.
Right.
And I don't know either. I did not receive the email.
Pardon me?
I did not receive the email, so I'm not sure what you're even talking about.
Oh, really, okay.
I read it, and I just thought, this is an issue for local cities to figure out.
Okay.
Not, it's not a state issue, in my opinion.
Okay, well, they were referencing that we should petition the state legislature to change-
I deleted the email after everything.
Okay, so, our attitude is delete, and okay, got that question answered, thank you.
That's my attitude.
If it's a national organization, I'm not too interested, if it's someone locally that is doing business in Wichita or Sedgwick County, I might listen to them, but I'm not too interested in an outside organization telling us how to run a state of Kansas.
Yeah, it seemed, it referenced every state, you know, and what their, what their state law is in reference to it. I don't, I agree, I think he was looking for, looking for local municipalities to lobby the state in order to change the state law on this, and it's, the more has to do with the enterprise of fireworks distribution. I don't know if it was so much about, it certainly would affect Sedgwick County, so, we can do some more research on it and get back to the commissioners on it.
Well, I don't think there's any support here to spend your time on it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
And the other thing on that that we got last week was on the invocation policy.
Oh, yeah.
And so, we are looking at that, I've talked to a couple of commissioners, have a couple more to go in terms of where we want to go with the invocation policy. There are some commissioners who like to go back to a past policy, and we just need to look at how we need to go forward.
What was the past policy?
Well, the idea is to do the invocation before the meeting starts, and allow people to participate, who want to participate, and those who don't, don't participate.
How far ago, how long ago was that?
I don't know the-
It has to be a long time ago.
Yeah, I don't know the exact amount of time, but there was just some different options discussed, so.
Well, then, there's one individual who's-
It's an atheist.
Atheist, and he wanted to have an invocation?
He wanted to have an invocation.
So, who does he pray to?
Ford Itsworth, I saw one of these on YouTube last week, and basically, it was a, it was a speech on separation of church and state, there was no object of his prayers, more of just a political speech is what the person gave, so that's what they did.
Is there any desire from the commissions to change your current policy? Do we need, do staff need to continue working on another option?
I don't particularly want to change it.
I'm not interested in changing it, we may want to let them know that, you know, five or six minutes may be too long. I think the one that they were talking about was a fairly lengthy invocation.
In terms of when we did the invocation before the meeting started, that was in 2016, when I was chairman, that was what we did then.
We did it before the meeting?
Did the invocation first, then we called the meeting to order, so somebody wanted to not be in there, and that was what they, they had that option at that point.
I forgot that.
Okay.
Well, I, well, whatever the commission wants to do, I'd be wanting to keep it in our meeting, but, and you changed it for that reason?
That was part of it, yeah. Other words, the official business, you need to be in the room for the official business, then we called the meeting to order, you need to be present for that, and we're not going to call, we're not going to require your presence for the invocation, that's voluntary, so that was very reasonable, I thought.
Yeah, well, I'm not opposed to officially invoking God's presence in our meeting, but...
I'm fine with it the way it is as well, but I think it's, it's fine to go the other, just reverse two things is all we're talking about potentially.
Okay.
So, there's consensus to keep it the way it is?
All right, so, where are we on that? You're going to continue talking to us, because I don't think I've chatted with you about it, so.
When Eric and I do our walk the halls this week, we'll talk to you about it.
Okay, just want to let everybody know tomorrow that I'm going to award the 2017 Chairman's Award to Jerry and Triva Lichty. I'm sure most of you have seen Jerry sometime or another in our time, and Triva's served on the Mental Health Advisory Board, but I'll say some things about him, but he's been really, really active in our community in mental health, behavioral health issues, and Jerry's always had a voice in some of the recent initiatives about mental health pods and crisis intervention teams, and our Community Crisis Center, and those sort of things, so, been continuous, unfailing, strong workers in our community, so that's who we'll recognize tomorrow. Other thing on my list is that, just ask who all's planning to go to that mental health workshop, whatever we want to call it, in Topeka on the 22nd, because I plan to go. Okay, manager, and are you going, Tom?
I plan to, yeah, we can work it out.
Are commissioners planning to go?
I was thinking about it.
Okay, well, I am going to go, are you going, David?
I gotta look at my calendar, I don't, I have it on my calendar, there, I don't know where else.
Okay, well, you guys might check, I think, I don't know who all's going to be there presenting, do you know, Tim?
I've got a tender schedule that I send out this morning to let you know who's going to speak.
I think the sheriff sent something to the commissioners yesterday about this.
Well, it's a relatively short presentation time, as I recall from that note, but I think it's important for Sedgwick County to show that we're in the game, and we want to help find a solution, and a solution must be found, so.
Colonel, is that part of a sheriff's association, larger scale meeting, or?
On the 22nd, yes, well, they have, the Sheriff's Association has what they call their Fall Conference, and that activity's on for about three days, it's in the middle of the day, and three.
Okay.
So, there'll be potentially, potential sheriffs, and of course, their lobbying's going to be there on some, I'm sure, and I'm sure at least your next plan will be there also.
It's a dinner that starts at 5:00, the presentation starts at 5:45 and ends at 7:00.
Okay, well, there's going to be, you might let the sheriff know, there's going to be six or eight of us that want to be there for that presentation.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your support.
Okay, I think that's all I have, but.
What about Naco? See who else is going to go to Naco?
Yeah, because it's, yeah, it's coming up. Commissioner asked about who's going to go to Naco, which is March, what, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, something like that, and if you're planning on going, and you want to be in the host hotel, you better make your plans now. And you plan to go?
I do, but I'm not sure I'm going all every day.
Yeah.
We need to take a look at dates, too.
Yes.
Any other commissioners?
I probably will go this year.
Okay, good. Richard?
No, but I'll be gone for a week in March for spring break, I can't remember.
Is it early or late?
Yeah, I have to talk to the wife, I can't remember, I'll try and get that, so, I don't know, anyone else going anywhere on spring break or anything, so that may, a couple weeks.
That's a cruise.
Yeah, that's what I'm being told.
All right, well, we need, I guess, to find out what our schedule for March is going to be as far as commission meetings go, because we may, it sounds like one week for sure, we will not have a quorum, and then after that, if there's only one commissioner missing, well, we could have a meeting and ask all the things that he might be against. Or however we manipulate that, so, okay.
I think weekend, I would say.
All right, anything else? How about staff around the table here? Anything? All right, how about sheriff's office?
A lot of folks here in the room today were present, they were cutting on Friday, we're all pretty excited, we appreciate the support of the commission, everybody else who was involved in that, moving process started bright and early yesterday, and so far, no casualties, smashed things, or damaged furniture, so things are looking good, we anticipate for our operations, I believe also, same for the Wichita Police Department, will all be in for the running on Tuesday, the 16th.
Okay, yeah, it's a great, great facility, so. Mr. Arnold? Nothing?
Talking, sir.
All right, you get a pass. Anybody else have anything to say, or want to bring anything up? All right, well, appreciate your attention and so forth, and we'll be adjourned now.